Welcome to this interview and question and answer session hosted by me councillor Andy Tree, leader of Whitehill Town Council with James Childs, project lead of the Whitehaven Board and Regeneration Company. The interview is held on behalf of Whitehill Town Council and ultimately on behalf of you as residents. The interview is in raw format, there will be no post-interview editing and so what you see is what you get and it's as real as if you're watching live. Lockdown has now affected our ability to hold and host public, big public meetings now for nearly a year, over a year, and we continue to try and find creative and different ways to hold those in power to account, including the Whitehaven Board and Regeneration Company. Lockdown doesn't stop us asking questions on behalf of residents and doesn't stop us seeking the answers that everybody wants to know. I'm pleased to say that every single question that was sent in to us has been answered by the regeneration company and can be viewed on our website in a hard copy document at There were too many questions sent in to ask all of them during the interview, so I would ask a selection. James has had no upfront site of today's specific questions and I will ask anything of my choosing as we go along. So I'm now going to ask Ray, our Deputy Town Clerk and Operations Manager, to invite James into the meeting so that we can begin. Good afternoon, James, and welcome to the meeting.
Hi there, how are you?
Very well, thanks, how are you?
You're good, thanks.
Good, good. Well, thanks again for agreeing to come to be interviewed by me and ask questions. Sometimes it's passed since September when we lasted this, when we started different ends of the table face to face during the restrictions that were in force at the time. So we shall begin.
Thank you.
So I guess, I guess the current situation is people have now seen significant housing going up, they've seen changes happening across the town, some of those such as the boss tree felling have been perceived as being very negative, although the swimming pool that I fought for back in 2014 is now opened in December, or open, closed, open, yeah, will be open again when restrictions allow, and the school is built which my son goes to, and there are many positives. Many would say there is still some way to go before they see the positive aspects of the regeneration come to fruition. So, so I guess my first question broadly speaking, to those who say, where is the town centre?, question mark, what's, what's your sort of overall response to that?
Well, the town centre, as you started saying about the leisure centre and things, it's already starting, it's well underway. The, the leisure centre reopens on the 12th of April, the shed, the makers market opens on the 29th of May, the town park is nearly finished, the town squares, and we're pretty close to being able to announce when all of the rest of the town centre, as our plans have outlined, will be finished. So we will make, we'll make an announcement about the food store in May, we're in discussions over legal terms at the moment with one particular operator, and good progress has also been made in finalising the arrangements for the new health hub, so both in May and June, we hope to have some very positive news about opening dates, both for the food store and the health hub, and that will allow us to commit to seeing further construction work beginning after we've got planning permission in the autumn. So the continued progress on site will be very evident from those visiting the town centre. I can share with you, and if you, if you like, share the view of the town centre as it currently is, it was only taken a few days ago, but you can start to see how it's starting to come together.
Okay, let's, before I pick up on some of those points you just raised, yeah, please do share, and let's, let's have a look.
I can't, I can't share at the moment.
We'll put it on, well, after the interview, as this is, this has been recorded live with no editing, we will place that on the hard copy document, so anybody watching this now will be able to go to www白hillehtowncouncil.gov.uk and have a look at that. Picking up what you said about the supermarket, I should say for anyone watching that I appreciate that you have actually been keeping me up to date with developments and you have been giving me confidential information, which I appreciate. Such information I cannot share, but I should reiterate to those watching that I am being kept in the loop and I do see it as my duty as the leader of the town council to, to be getting myself in the inner circle so that I do get this information and can, and can discuss on your behalf. The reason, I guess I would say to you, James, obviously, that residents are becoming increasingly impatient, I keep obviously telling them that you are keeping me in the loop and things are progressing, and that's why I'm not in, I guess in simple terms, bashing you, bashing you over it. However, public patience is waning and obviously, I guess what I'm asking is, if I've, if I've, you know, keep telling people, don't worry, don't worry, it's happening, you know, the delays are, you know, we'll eventually, we'll get an announcement etcetera, what can you say now to, I guess reassure me that I'm doing the right thing by, by, by not launching the attack on why there's a delay and, and what can you do to reassure the public that we will get somewhere, but in May?
Well, we, you know, we want as much as anybody to see a successful town centre, our money's invested in it, a significant amount of money is being invested in this. We are completely wedded to delivering a high quality town centre. The food store, as I said, is virtually there, but until the food store main board, which is a PLC, say it's good to announce our name, we can't, we can't announce it, I would love to be able to tell you who it is right now, but I can't. I can when they've signed it off formally through their main board at the beginning of May. So I, I see it with very, a lot of confidence to say that, you know, we are, will be announcing who the food store is at the beginning of May.
Okay, thank you. Well, obviously, we will, hopefully in May, we can have another Q and A session, hopefully there'll be some, some good news there, because I would, you know, as a resident myself, I would very much like to be announcing, you know, a new supermarket, because I do think in terms of the overall development, that's, that is a positive step forward and does give choice then, in terms of consumers wanting to shop. The other thing you mentioned a second ago was the health hub. Now, again, this is, I would say, from a resident point of view, an ongoing saga, of course, in terms of health provision, because, you know, the NHS position, I understand, is that Chase Hospital stays open until anything, anything is created to replace it, but without specifically mentioning what services stay open, and of course that then leads us on to a whole separate discussion as to the, you know, services that have gone to all community hospital, x-ray machines that no longer exist, etcetera, etcetera. Now, I understand, obviously, there's lots of organisations involved in putting forward a case for health provision, appropriate, acceptable, health, you know, private health provision that residents should expect. Now, I know that East Hampshire District Council now have been, in their own words, working up a business case as to whether they fund health provision for over a year now. So I know obviously it relies on the, on them to some extent to announce whether they're going to fund it. I know, I know it depends on the NHS CCG, the part of the NHS that pays for local services, to commit to funding the services within it and bringing, you know, doctors on board. But I guess, and obviously there's COVID, which obviously does cause delay somewhere along the line. So I guess my question is, what is the reason for the planning application being delayed further from, from what was expected last year? Is it the HDC's delay in announcing whether they'll fund it? Is it the NHS CCG not committing to the services? Is it COVID or is it all of the above?
I would, I wouldn't say it's any one particular reason, I think there are delays, it is not a straightforward building to get funded, it does need principally the NHS to say yes, they will support it, and we have to get all the operators, the doctors, the pharmacy and Southern Health all to agree how that building is going to be operated together before the CCG will sign it off, because they have to know that the way in which those services are delivered is value for money for the public sector. So the, finally, we, delay was caused by COVID-19, because Southern Health in particular, their teams were flat out in, on the vaccination programme, so we had not been able to get a meeting for several months due to that, but now the doctors and Southern Health have met, there is a good understanding of how they're going to work together within this building. That allows us to determine exactly the floor space that the building needs for those services. That then now allows the CCG to put forward for approval, a business case, to take it forward, and we're hoping that that goes through the CCG board in April and allows us, and allows East Tans also to make the same commitment. Certainly, I know there are elections in the way, but very soon after the elections, hopefully, that they can announce their support too. So I would, I would expect in June that we will have an announcement about the, the timing of when the health hub will be open.
Okay, thanks, James. Again, it'll be interesting in May, June to obviously get a further update than that, as we'll be halfway through the year by then. Big issue lately, and one I, one I care about too is obviously green space trees, there's, you know, been lots of concern and upset regarding, for example, boss tree felling and indeed any felling of any, of any trees, especially those perceived to be of higher value than, than brand new saplings being potentially planted in their place. So I guess, I guess, although I appreciate that the overall regeneration planning application was passed by East Hampshire District Council many years ago now, and, you know, we could all argue about the compromises made at the time and what's good, what's bad, and many people will have different views and opinions, but I guess my question to you now is, is, yes, the plans were scrutinised at the time, but a lot of new residents have come into the town, a lot of people, you know, social media, Facebook, being able to watch interviews like this, this is all actually reasonably new, this wasn't even happening five years ago. So a lot of people aren't informed about what's going on, when they are actually very interested and do care. So I guess my question is, how, despite planning applications that may have been passed, how do you as the regeneration company, sort of reassure the public that you're sensitive to local feeling, take on board their feedback as you, as you proceed, I guess?
Yeah, pre-COVID, I think even on our town centre plans, we would, we would hold regular quarterly Q and A sessions, and even on the town centre plans, we had, I think it was 1300 people come to our events, and we will carry on when we can, open and do face-to-face events, we'll start that all up again. I think the Q and A sessions with the town council were also extremely good before lockdown happened and they were well attended and well supported. We've tried to do some of this online, but it's never quite as good as a face-to-face environment, but hopefully by the summer we can get back to having face-to-face meetings again, and, and it's a good way for us to, to tell people what's going on, particularly those that aren't aware of, of the past or have recently moved to the area. We've also got our websites and our online information, our newsletters, which goes out every month, and the more people that subscribe to that, the better. We have over 4000 people now that we reach out to every month, and we also like to share that with yourselves, town council, district council and so on. So we, you know, we can always miss people, we're making a lot of effort to make sure we reach as many people as possible every month, and we also put stuff in the board and heralds and news of what's, what's going on. In terms of planning applications, and we, we also go, we go beyond what we have to in terms of just having one consultation event for every application that comes through, we tend to, like on the town centre, I think we ended up with three or four events where we showcased what we were doing and actually listened to what people said and adapted our plans. And a lot of what we've done, including the cafe Hogmore Beehive, the skate park, they were never in the original plans, we've actually delivered over and above what we had to under the planning application, and that's principally because we've listened to what people want. And there's a great call at the moment for youth provision and youth centres, and, you know, we're, we're very alive to that, and we want to see a youth club, a new youth club being built in the town, and that we're starting to build those, those ideas into our future plans going forward. So it's not about just about housing, it's about all the things that the town wants to see, which benefited. I note also recently calls for bowling, a lot of calls for people saying that they kind of like to see a bowling facility within the future plans of the town centre. We're talking to the Phoenix about a new, a new theatre in the town centre in the next phase of the town centre. So all of these ideas are coming from us listening to town council and others and people in the community that are saying, actually, this town needs these new facilities and we, we will build those into our plans. So it is not fair to say that we just build houses, we actually are doing a lot more and over and above what we have to in delivering facilities that people want, it just takes time. The main thing is we're now five years into a 20-year programme, and people want to see it happen overnight, I understand that, but it does take time to get the costs right, to build it right, to build it of the right quality, get the right operators and make sure we deliver on what we promised to do. And unfortunately, you know, we're all a bit impatient, and I'm sorry, a few things get in the way sometimes, like COVID or impact on cinemas from COVID, it's been huge, the delays on the cinema, as, plans on the cinema has been principally caused because cinemas today are not viable in their current form, we can't get enough people in cinemas under current restrictions for them to be viable. So we've had to move the cinema out to a later phase in the town centre. So, you know, there are things that impact us and change our plans, but we're, rest assured, our main focus at the moment is in making sure that this town centre is successful, and that is probably about 75% of my job at the moment.
Well, that's great, thanks, James. On that note, with the cinema, there is confusion, and I've been asked questions lately, because obviously there's talk of what we would call a proper cinema, and then there's drive-in cinema. I appreciate, obviously, cinemas have been impacted because of COVID, however, that's not, well, hopefully not going to be the case forevermore, there comes a point whereby, you know, if, if the government are saying, you know, they hope to be able to open nightclubs in, in June, then I would have thought that cinemas, the viability of cinemas then comes, potentially comes back to life. What, what is the expectation for the avoidance of all doubt now in terms of drive-in cinema versus real cinema and what residents should expect, and what can, what can be blamed on COVID and what cannot be blamed on COVID?
So the, the drive-in we're doing anyway is proven to be very successful at Longmore, and we're, the same operator is going to open up the drive-in in the town, so we're going to do that anyway, that's on the former parade square. The, the mess hall, the former sergeant's mess will be also a food and beverage and an entertainment venue, and that will also have a screening of films as well. We're also working with the Phoenix on the events and entertainment programme in the town, in the town, and the Phoenix will also now has a film capabilities. And then we're also designing what we call a multimedia centre, which is also a, basically a digital screen. The new types of cinema are usually, are probably going to be using digital screens, so we're going down a digital screen route, and that facility will be, is included in the phase two of the town centre, which will start on site from 2025. So that's when we are building the new, what you'd call a traditional style cinema, but it's actually going to be adaptable to being able to do theatre and also to be able to do gaming sessions and also to deal with business presentations and so on. So it's a, it's a flexible multimedia centre as opposed to just a traditional style cinema.
Okay, thanks, James. I could just very quickly go back to, to trees again, and one thing I've been asked is that can they, can there in simple terms be a document created that just simply explains in sort of plain English to the point what the expectations are in terms of any tree felling, you know, you know, in the future is going to be? Because, look, at the end of the day, this information is in the public domain, but that means going to East Hampshire District Council's planning portal and trawling through, you know, 10 million pages of gobbledegook, and, and the average person, including myself, just wants to get to the point and understand in plain English what the expectations are. And I think if there was an expert, if there was a sort of a plain English plan, if somehow the mark, that can, that can be turned into a more user-friendly document that you could create and post from your perspective, I think it would, you know, give people the opportunity to look and see what's expected, to ask upfront and to not then be, you know, very disappointed and panicked when suddenly things start happening that weren't expected, and it enables you to, I guess, to engage with people far sooner and be a bit more proactive rather than reactive. I, I don't know what your thoughts on that are?
No, I, I've, I've seen those comments and we're very happy to try and produce something that's much more readable and understandable and cover the broad range of environmental sustainable issues that, that we are, we need to deal with, and it's not just trees, trees is one part of it. On trees, we are going to plant double the number of trees that we take out, but unfortunately you see the, with, the, the trees around boss, they've, they've had to go as we had permission for, as, as planned for, because that was the next phase of development, but we, rest assured, we are planting double the number of the trees that we take out, and we're not just planting saplings, we are looking at making sure that the trees that come in are mature enough, that, that they can, they're between a five and 25 years old before, as they're planted, because they need to be established and they need to have a, a proper impact on the environment when we do plant them and that they can be looked after properly, and we're under a duty to make sure we look after the, the planting that we bring in and that, and the very detailed plans that we have shared with both the town council and also the district council in terms of every, every plant, every species, making sure it's native, encourages wildlife and biodiversity and so on. So there's, there's quite a detailed plan, but as you say, it can often look like gobbledegook, and so we are trying to produce on a regular basis, and we'll produce the first one early next month, which will show across a range of indicators how we're doing against our obligations around environmental and social sustainability, and that's also about jobs, that's also about getting, encouraging people to be healthy and to travel, but it's also looking after wildlife, it's looking after plants, it's looking after trees, encouraging native species, etcetera, etcetera. So that's, we will start that from next month and I welcome, you know, a lot of people's comments, I've read those comments, and yes, we need to start doing that, and we'll share, we'll share that with you early next month and quarterly afterwards.
That's great, thanks, James. I just want to touch very briefly, because it's very early stage, but obviously last year, East Hampshire District Council made a policy decision to have an additional, so additional to what was already planned, 1300 houses within Whitehaven Board. Obviously, that was a decision that the town council voted against for various reasons, it can be found on our, on our website, namely that we believe the infrastructure needs to come and that we don't want to be saturated with, with housing. Nevertheless, the East Hampshire District Council has announced that that's, that it does want to build an extra 1300 houses in Whitehaven Board. How does that link in, just briefly, how does that link in with, with you at the mo, as it stands at the moment? Because that is an early-stage decision, there's no planning application as of yet. So, so what is, in simple terms, what is the current status from your perspective in those, in that, in that idea?
So East Tans went, ran a process called Call For Sites, Call For Sites, and they were, they, they asked within the district council which large sites could come forward that would support the, the growth of housing numbers that's projected by government and by, you know, all those people that, that are given, looking, looking at demographics and particularly in this part of the world. And it was felt, and it was judged, that Whitehaven Board was the most sustainable place in East Tans District Council for a large site to grow and for the town to grow, it could sustain it. And that's not just housing numbers, when they judge sustainability, they're looking at a whole range of factors that will lead to a conclusion that it can be sustainable, and that's also about social services, those, those social services such as schools and health, and the other, other, other things that the town needs in order to support more housing. And that also involved in our, when in discussion with us, we said, well, that would also involve a bigger town centre than the one we're in the process of building now. And we see that, that a larger town centre plus a health hub that can support that number of people, plus the additional primary schools and extensions to Oakmoor School and all those things, and the additional SANG, which is areas of natural green space that support those homes, all of that could be delivered with our support in the town. And that's sort of the basis on which East Tans have taken forward into the stage of proving through what's called habitat assessments and transport modelling and all the things that East Tans are currently doing. If, if all of that, all of that technical work supports what I've just, just said, then they will recommend that that goes to the inspector as part of the local plan at the end of this year. So there's a lot of technical work that East Tans are doing to prove that it is genuinely sustainable, and it's not just about 1300 homes, it's about all the other things that have to go with it to make it a sustainable place. A lot of people are saying, well, how can you do that if you haven't finished the town centre? And we're saying, well, by the time this comes forward, the, the first phase of the town centre will be finished, and we will be looking at the second phase of the town centre. None of these new additional homes will be built until after the, the town centre is fully built and in its current, in its current guise. So it is, we're talking about a process that extends the town by 1300 through to, I think it's 20, 2028, so it's over the next long, long period of time, 2038, sorry, 17 years.
Okay, thanks, James. I mean, I, I think, you know, I think with the greatest of respect, many residents would disagree and would be concerned that even if the town centre does come to fruition in, in the way that it's said, that we don't always want to be playing catch-up, i.e. just as we get the facilities to satisfy the, the increased population, the population then increases further, and that, that would worry me. I do appreciate that whilst you're the developer, the policy idea and proposal to have an extra 1300 houses is a policy decision of East Hampshire District Council and not you, and therefore ultimately it is East Hampshire District Council that, that is, that is making that, that decision. Can I just ask, just one, one thing I am asked, unless you want to also come back on that, is many people ask me what the situation with the ECO town label is, and where, and this, this lack of clarity as to, although the whole project started as an ECO town project, and I believe that was a, you know, pre, previous government's view, that the label was dropped, and I'm now sort of in this halfway house of not being called an ECO town, but still having some kind of eco theme? So I think it would be good to clarify where ECO town and Greentown and, and, you know, Healthy Town all now actually fit in to what we're actually doing in reality.
So I think ECO town is a label that came out of the work that Tony Blair's government did on expansion of towns, and at the time, and this is well before my time, they were talking about a town of 5,000 new homes, well, well above even the, the amount of homes that we're talking about for the additional 1300 actually, and it would be eco in the sense of truly sustainable, trying to remove the reliance on cars, a lot more emphasis on public transport, not a railway station at the time, either they explored it as part of that, but essentially it was a much bigger town and a much bigger ambition for the town than even the current plans. What came to pass is that the ECO town in its concept was flawed because the cost of getting there was even above the viability of delivering it, and it became clear to all of the stakeholders involved in the project that the plans need to be scaled down somewhat from 5,000 homes to the current 2,400 homes under the current planning application, and that this, this town was one that wouldn't mean that everybody could get around on bicycles and, and not rely on the car. And so it was, it was very much brought it to a scale that was deliverable and affordable to the public sector to deliver it. And that still came to the current plans, having a very significant section 106, which is the, the obligation to the community to deliver new services, so £54 million commitment from us and the MOD to deliver those services to the town for 2,400 homes, and that was a viable scheme, hence we are cracking on with delivering it. So I think the ECO town ambitions were unaffordable and unsustainable in, in a true sense, and actually with the, the approach that's now taken, that, you know, no, no new homes should come forward, and it's now government policy too, without good quality design and, and an ability to demonstrate. And it's now government policy too, without good quality design and and an ability to demonstrate that the the schemes are viable and deliverable and all the and adds to the place. And it's now all about place making first in in government policy. And that's also filtering down into the district council and yourselves as town council. So we won't get planning permission for anything that doesn't deliver on those broader objectives of place and place making and social adding social value to a place. And that's that's the basis on which we're taking our plans forward.
Okay, thanks, James. A big area that is very close to my heart because I only learned to drive a few years ago. So for for a long time in my adult life, I was relying on public transport. And in fact, I first got involved in in local issues when the previous railing bus that used to travel between Borden and Lipwood was abolished because I used it. So a big issue for me is is public transport. So I appreciate those those discussions going on in the background. And and people will be aware of the of the statements that you've already put out in terms of the proposed vocer service, which talks about having having in simple terms taxes for the price of buses. And obviously, I've spoken to you previously about it, make it involving current taxi drivers in such discussions, et cetera, et cetera. In what what I appreciate those discussions are ongoing, but when when should people expect a further sort of statement of an or announcement or clarification in terms of any public transport proposals that you wish to implement and put forward?
So the approval of our proposal is by the main transport authority, which is Hampshire County Council. And we're putting our proposals formally to them before the end of this month, the end of March. And we reckon the Hampshire County Council can review and come to what they want to do with our proposals probably by June because it's going to, and there are elections, obviously, that get in the way of these things. Our aim is to launch the new vocer service from from September onwards, September, October onwards. Particularly when we feel by then we'll be out of lockdown. So people will have a need for these services because the the shops are open, the retail is open, that people are travelling more than they used to. And therefore, there will be the demand there to support the service. And so our our plans to our launch to do a soft launch of the service from September, making sure that we find out all the operational issues and then build up that service over over twelve months and to scale it up as part of those proposals. And and hopefully it will be well supported by people in the town. It will only be successful if people use it. And we're hoping that it will be seen to be something that people want and use, and that will support its continued use over a period of time. So we, the longevity of the service depends on people using it. And we're proposing initially that that the service is there for guaranteed by us for a minimum of two years. And if people are taking it up, that would sustain it going forward beyond two years.
Okay, thanks, James. Let's talk about something which I think is generally positive, which is the opening of the Shed, previously known as the Makers Market. I guess, first of all, I I would say that the name The Shed has been met met with almost universal dislike on social media. So I think it would actually be quite useful to just just explain the rationale and the and the reasoning behind it being called The Shed, I guess, would be a first question.
Yeah, the I I wouldn't say it's universal dislike. I've actually had a young, if you if you ask younger people, they actually quite like that name. I'm a bit older, so people of my age tend to dislike it. People of young generation tend to like it. And but the name actually relates to a military name, number one, The Shed, which was the first shed in Borden. And it it harks back to the military names. And it's a bit, it's a bit of fun, really, so that we've got, it's a fun name, it's a memorable name. You you certainly remember it as I do. And it's 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 proving, it's proving also to be for traders a really really exciting thing for them. And they're all local traders. And they're all coming from a local area and they're all really excited to get it open. And as am I. And so I'm really looking forward to opening it on the twenty ninth of May.
Great. Well, I guess the jury's out then on the on the name, but but perhaps it would be of interest to people to know that it did have a historical context in terms of how how it came up. That'd be good, something to perhaps promote on Facebook as well. Because I think I think that, you know, because we are steeped in history as a military town, that that the connections to the past are actually quite important. I know a lot of people I speak to, residents who believe there it's vital to to keep the connections to the past and link the present and the regeneration to what has been. I'd be proud of the history of the town. So I do have to ask again, because I've had the question direct. So obviously, I'm guessing the regeneration company, you are trying to to bring locals on board. You know, people have lived here all their life and also people have moved to the area recently, everybody. An example would be, you know, Flamin Tucker, the the burger gourmet burger van, award winning, well-known local, local people. I would have thought that engaging with them and inviting them in would have been a great way to sort of spread a positive message amongst locals and to and to gain the trust and support of local people as well. And and I do feel that some local businesses, Flamin Tucker, being an example, you know, the perception is that they've been set aside in the place of those coming in from outside the area to provide the same service. So I guess, you know, and that's and and I find that hard to to justify, you know, supporting. So so so, and in fact, I don't you know, I don't support local businesses being set aside. On the contrary, I support local businesses a hundred percent. So what do you say back to that? And what do you say to any local business that might be wanting to involve themselves in the new town centre and what you're doing?
So everybody in the Shed comes from a short drive time from the town or within the town. So there we have quite a number of people that live within a walking distance of the Shed. And actually, they are there and they are trading from there. We we have sixteen spaces within the Shed, of which fourteen are now taken. There are two spaces left. They're not food and beverage spaces left. They are more retail spaces. And then we have twenty four stalls for markets, weekly markets. And I think there are still some stores left. And again, almost all of those market traders are are local and they're within a short, either a short walk or a short drive from from the Shed and the town square where the market is going to be. So we, just specifically on on Flamin Tucker, you know, great, great service. He's got a good trade. He's got a good reputation. What that won't necessarily be lost by what we're doing. We've invited him, I think, to come into the the weekly market. The space for the gourmet burger was already taken. We'd already agreed in principle with somebody else before we talked, before we were approached by him, unfortunately. But there is space for him within the market spaces as well. And he can trade Friday, Saturday, Sunday within the town centre, which is the main busy trading day days. But he also can then operate as he does from other locations on top. So I actually don't think that it will necessarily be bad for his business. I think it would be good for his business if he wants to come and trade from the market.
Well, I hope there can be some some positive, you know, outcome there. I mean, I can only say it's, I I do genuinely think it's a missed opportunity. To to engage with 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 them. I've been town council last December did did, you know, make it our policy to want to support local businesses. And I mean, on the theme of local businesses, can I can I just ask? Obviously, we've got Signal, which is the, which supports local businesses at Martinique House. And and again, we'll put Signals details on our website, www白hilleetowncouncil.gov.uk. And we've mentioned Signal in our town council newsletter that's been distributed. What is the the future for Martinique House and the surrounding buildings? Is there a plan for them at the moment?
So the intention, as always, is for Signal to move into the town centre. We have two buildings of five thousand square feet each, and Signal will move in to both those buildings and grow from its current plans. And so when those buildings are up and running, which will be twenty twenty three, they will move across. The future of the area around where Martinique House is always been earmarked for residential homes development. And that will be the case from about twenty twenty five onwards, is when we will develop the area around Martinique House and Martinique House itself for residential development, once Signal has moved into the town centre.
Okay, great. Thanks, James. Another question that's come from a variety of different people, actually, in in recent weeks, actually, is the idea of a museum. Obviously, people have talked about the, what is currently the EHDC eco station, that they've talked about the new town centre. Obviously, again, this is something that requires multiple people. Heritage Society obviously will be an important voice there in terms of, you know, what could happen and whether it's something that, you know, covers ancient history all the way up to the regeneration of the town now. Are you showcasing the future as well as the past? What is your, do you have any any input or any discussions in terms of 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 having some kind of museum?
So we we we've been talking to Wilmer Heritage Society for quite a while. The the Arts and Heritage Gallery, as we call it, has always been in what we call Block C or the the former Sergeant's Mess building as as redeveloped. And it still is where we intend to create that space. And now that we're close to announcing the start of the future, the next phase of development, there will be in that Sergeant's Mess new building and Arts and Gallery heritage space. And we will make sure that those are those things we've said to Wilmer Forest Heritage Society will will be delivered.
Okay, great. Well, that sounds positive. Because I, as I said, I think people really do care about the history of the town. And with all the changes that are happening, for, you know, people who have lived here all their lives, it's important to make sure that's not, that's not lost. I should say, although we're coming towards the end now, and I think most people do know who you are now and who the Whitehills Regeneration Company are, I should have asked at the beginning. And so I'll ask now, just very briefly, what is your role and what is your remit? What do you control within the town at the moment, moving forward?
So I'm the project director for the redevelopment of the former Prince Philip Barracks in the town. So I'm responsible for all of the development that's been promoted and delivered across the former Prince Philip Barracks. And that will see me through to the end of the project in another fifteen years' time.
Great, thanks. So so I guess to conclude, I I would say, you know, thanks for coming. I I don't seek to to bash anybody, the regeneration company, you, for the sake of it. But I do think it's my duty to hold those in power to account and be challenging and robust in doing that and make sure we get the answers and that things happen as they should happen. So I guess my my final question is, in conclusion, why should people support the regeneration? What do you plan to deliver in the next twelve months? And and how will the next twelve months build confidence in our community in terms of the whole project?
So the next twelve months is the announcement of the food store operator and the health hub starting on site on those buildings, delivering in twelve months' time the first of those buildings and another building every six months afterwards, so that our aim is by Easter twenty four, the first phase of the town centre is built and delivered and is a successful town centre. And it and it's, it is, people in the town centre trading from it are all local people. It's going to be a local town centre for local people with a food, a a national food store operator and a modern big health hub to for the benefit of the town as it grows. So that's that's my main focus of action over the next twelve or so months. In addition, we will see the first new homes up at Bos Village delivered by Dorchester, great classic style homes. We will also see the new nursery being built along Bud's Lane. We will also see the start and the building of the new youth centre along Bud's Lane. And we will also see the opening of the new headquarters facility in the UK for Asma D, the toy games distributor, just off the Relief Road Hovmore enclosure. And that will be open, creating several hundred jobs. So there's a lot to look forward to. It has been a very difficult twelve months for everybody. But we haven't stopped, actually, and we've carried on building at a at a good rate despite the restrictions through lockdown. And we we're actually quite positive about the future and see a lot to be done in the next twelve months. And people will hopefully get some sense that we are actually doing what we say we're going to do despite despite people's concerns.
Okay, thanks, James. Well, speaking not just as a councillor, but as a dad of four kids ranging from thirteen to three, I really do want to see the town to successful for not just my my generation and those above, but the the next generations as well. So you know, I really do hope. I mean, what I what I've got from this is that May-June time is going to be some positive announcements, hopefully, on supermarket and health hub. So that's what we can follow up next time, also about vocer and public transport. And also, you know, the communication flow, I I think is getting better. I think even five years ago, we didn't have Facebook, social media. And people want to be informed, they want to know what's going on, and people want to make sure their voices are heard. And I see it as my duty to make sure that happens. That all that leaves me to say is thank you for coming. Fingers crossed this has recorded or we'll have to do the whole thing again. So so so, yeah, so listen, you don't have to come come, James. So it is very much appreciated that you've joined me on this soon call. I obviously wish you all the best personally. And and I look forward to interviewing you again later in the year to pick up on the subjects of today and talk about and talk about the future again. So I just thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. Look forward to the next one.
Thank you. Hopefully, we can do a face to face meeting with residents.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, James. Thank you. Just as a reminder, you can view this interview obviously on our website, www白hilleetowncouncil.gov.uk. You can view the full hard copy question and answer document. There are also other useful documents you may wish to have a look at, such as the strategic plan the town council made and approved back in December twenty twenty about what our plans for the next four years are. Also shows you which councils are responsible for what and how we attempt to punch about our weight in terms of representing residents. We recently issued a newsletter to all residents in the town, a hard copy, which can also be found in electronic copy on our website. And I'm also speaking to other organisations. Most recently, I met with the police last week. And we and we have put posts out on on Facebook regarding that meeting, and I will continue to do so. So that's all from me. Again, although we do these interview sessions periodically, if anybody has any questions for the regeneration company, then contact can be made directly or you can ask by Whitehill Town Council by emailing info@whitehilletowncouncil.gov.uk. We would always be very happy to hear from you. In the meantime, I hope everyone takes care of themselves and best of luck and and look forward to speaking to you again soon.